Both from informal observations and from formal observations, which do account for 25% of the teacher's evaluation. All teachers in the district have access to a lead teacher that can observe the classroom for the purpose of providing non-evaluative feedback on all four domains, including classroom management. The majority of our schools have a positive behavioral intervention and supports program. And through the program, the teachers and the administrators in the schools are provided with annual training. With a PBIS school, the entire school culture is, and the plan is designed to encourage positive behaviors. The entire staff work with the students on teaching explicit behaviors and expectations. The focus with PBIS is on prevention and not punishment. In grades K through eight, our school counselors provide classroom lessons to students on social-emotional learning, appropriate peer interaction, and bullying prevention. At the high school level, the counseling curriculum is embedded in Naviance. School-based professional development is probably the most critical aspect because it really meets the unique needs of the teachers and the students that are in the building. Professional development at school level is usually led by teachers. And it's on a variety of topics, maybe understanding poverty, on trauma-informed care, teaching students from different cultures, the importance of relationships, perhaps de-escalation strategies. These are repetitive annual themes for many of our schools that provide professional development throughout the year. Principals in our buildings design the PD around the needs of their staff. And that's usually done through an analysis of data, discipline data. Generally, this is created through a school improvement team. And the sit team establishes the climate goals for the school. They create the action steps as part of the school improvement plan. And the schools are also addressing existing disproportionalities within their discipline data through their school improvement plans. Resources and training at the county level. We have the county handbook and guide, which is made available to all students and parents in the district. That contains the expectations for student behavior. New teachers receive training during New Teacher Academy. And they also participate in regular mentor forums throughout the school year. And those forums are focused on all four domains of the teacher evaluation process. County-level professional development is available each year to all teachers on a variety of topics. And I have a list that I wanted to share from this past school year. So positive behavioral interventions and supports was provided over the summer. We had about 90 administrators and teachers participate with that training, and that covered 22 schools. Over the past three years, we've provided Crisis Prevention Institute training to more than 650 staff members across all of our schools. We've provided professional development for working with students in poverty this past school year for new teachers. And that's again planned for this year, next month. We have provided crisis-to-calm training, which helps teachers kind of develop a toolbox to maintain successful classrooms. This past school year, we trained 140 staff members, and it was five different levels of training. We offered early learning crisis-to-calm training this past summer, and that was provided to 45 teachers. And finally, we provided life-space crisis intervention training. This past summer, it was a four-day training program, and that was provided to all of our, well, 31 counselors and social workers. Every school has access to consultant services from a board-certified behavior analyst. The analyst provides support to school teams. They can assist with the development of a functional behavior assessment in creating the behavior improvement plan for our students. The analysts supervise 21 adult support paraprofessionals that were hired last school year. And these 21 pairs provide support at the elementary level for students that have significant behaviors. Each school has access to a school psychologist. We do have 10 of those positions county-wide. The school psychologists can be used for consult services, but also they provide support during a threat assessment, risk evaluation. And the school psychologists are also key with developing safety plans. Every secondary school in the district has an assigned student intervention specialist. They work with students on their caseload with specific goals, with improving attendance and improving behavior. More recently, through our Safe Schools Grant, which is managed by the, our mental health coordinator, we're going to have professional development available this year to 45 staff members across 13 schools on restorative practices. And that's specific to the circles and the conferences, the restorative conferences that's found within this two-page restorative approach document. So the training for those 45 staff members across 13 schools, that'll start in November. There will be a segment that will occur in January, and then the rest of that training will occur in the summer. Also with the Safe Schools Grant, it will enable us to provide mental health first aid training to about 150 teachers and paraprofessionals this year. This will help provide our staff with the skills that they need to respond with, to students that have mental health needs. The grant also funds, provides funding for students to access mental health services free of charge. And the grant will also provide a consultant, which will have about 300 hours to work with select schools specifically to reduce misbehaviors within the school and improve school safety. Our county has Antietam Academy, which is a Tier III therapeutic support. And we have students in grades six through 12 that attend Antietam Academy. We also offer in-county therapeutic support programs for students at all levels. So I'll kind of talk through three of them this afternoon. So the first one is the Summit Program. At the elementary level, the Summit Program is, it serves both special ed and non-special ed students. And we have three locations for that program. The first location is at Rockland Woods, and it provides services to students in grades K through two. And then students that need the additional therapeutic assistance for grades three, four, and five, we have programs at Jonathan Heger and Salem Avenue. At the secondary level, the Summit Program serves only special ed students. Those programs are located at South High, Williamsport High, North High, Smithburg High School, Western Heights Middle School, Northern Middle School, E. Russell Hicks, and Antietam Academy. The next program is a structured transitional education program, referred to as STEP. This program's located at Ruth Ann Monroe. It provides support for special ed students in grades K through two. It provides life skills, intense behavioral supports for students that have both developmental or cognitive delays. These are traditionally your students that may end up in a life skills program. The last program is the Elementary Support for Success Program, also referred to as the ESSP. This is probably the newest program. It's currently under development at Paramount Elementary. And it's going to be a behavior and support program for non-special ed students. Over the past month, staff has met several times with the Washington County Teachers Association to plan and convene our first of four discipline committee meetings. Our first meeting is next Wednesday. The committee is going to be comprised of teachers and administrators from different levels. And our purpose will be to discuss discipline data and topics in order to identify solution-focused feedback and suggestions. The last part is responding to student misbehavior. So school administrators each year provide professional development to staff on the difference between classroom-managed behaviors and office-managed behaviors. So the staff at every school receives that training so that they, they are aware that when a certain behavior occurs within the classroom, whether the teacher is responsible for managing the behavior initially or if it's referred to the administration. For the classroom-managed behaviors, the teacher follows his or her classroom management steps. Consistency is key with following their classroom management steps. In some cases, the expectations are established with input from the students. So usually at the beginning of the school year, within the first two weeks, the teacher works with the students in the classroom, and they create the classroom management plan together. Usually, the teacher has two or three non-negotiables, and then the students add one or two items that they'd like to have in the classroom. A teacher's response to misbehavior usually includes several progressive steps at our schools. So generally, it starts off with perhaps a warning that's issued to the student. That would progress to a conversation with the student one-on-one, parent notification, maybe a conference with the parent, and eventually the assignment of detentions. If behaviors or similar behaviors persist through that progressive steps, then the student is referred to the administration for support. Most teachers access supports and resources in between or in conjunction with those steps. So that may include talking with a counselor, a social worker. Student receives special ed services. It may include consulting with the special ed case worker or perhaps a referral to the student support team. For office-managed behaviors, which include misbehaviors outside of the classroom or could include the behaviors where the student has exhausted their progressive steps, it starts off with the school administrator investigates the incident. They consult with the teacher if it's a misbehavior that occurred in a classroom, and they, they're required to provide due process to the student. Input from the teacher for classroom incidents is critical for an administrator when they're really determining the effective response to the student. Administration uses the other handout that you have here this afternoon. It's a chart, front and back. Our administrators use the guidelines to determine an appropriate consequence. If you look at the guidelines, the consequences of the interventions can range from a warning or parent conference, and it could go up to a suspension from school. Generally, suspensions are reserved for incidents that involve physical altercations, possessions of weapons or drugs, or a serious threat. A few years ago, our, every county in Maryland discontinued suspending students from school for attendance-related concerns. I think that was probably about three years ago that that was put in place. Regardless as to whether it's the teacher that's imposing the consequence or an administrator, I think the goal with both would be to kind of, both be restorative and educational and allow the student to re-enter the classroom so that they can re-engage with the instruction. This concludes the information I wanted to share. Dr. Michael, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add?
I don't know if there's anything we want to add. We certainly want to respond to questions from the board regarding discipline. I guess, part of being around for 41 years, you know, the evolution of all the discipline processes we have and specialized programs we have, you can see a pretty, I don't know if it's an interesting timeline, but we have steadily and gradually increased the opportunities for students that have various types of behaviors to try to address things that we didn't see, you know, 20 years ago or 40 years ago. Antietam Academy, you know, I can remember when it was first started really for seventh and eighth graders. And then it expanded to ninth graders, and really was a place, for the most part, children stayed until they were 16, when they could drop out. And now it's expanded to a six-through-12 school. We have many students who graduate from there. The size has probably gone from 20 to well over 150 students that are at Antietam Academy. I mean, that's just one example of an expansion of programs. Summit programs, RISE programs, STEP programs, the non-special ed program we're starting at Paramount, the additional BCBA's or the introduction of BCBA's, and the 22 parapros, Mr. Jacoby just mentioned, all new just in the last couple of years. So we're continuing to respond to the needs of children. We're seeing different types of behavior than we saw years ago for a whole variety of reasons. And we know they're our children, and we certainly want to try to work with them and try to address their needs. We do expect them to behave, and we don't expect anyone to interfere with the education of others. So it's a constantly evolving effort that everyone's working with to try to do the very best we can for every child in the system. Thank you.
Colleagues, questions?
Hello, hello, hello. Okay, good. I had sent in questions. It looks like you answered most of them. I just want to go through them. What resources do staff want, need to help with this issue? I think you went through, they're getting significant PD time, correct, is, would be your answer there?
Yeah, I think at most schools, it's the school improvement team that will help drive and determine the needs of the staff. So on a PD day at our schools, there's both the focus with curriculum, but also the management aspect of the job. I think the, the committee that meets next week will be another layer of support to try to identify and make sure that we don't miss anything. If there are some needs or requests, that we kind of listen to those and consider those and see what we can put in place.
Got it. And is that a place, if people have, you know, because one of my other questions was, I would hear a lot from teachers that would say they feel powerless when it comes to discipline. Is, what would be your answer? And is this committee a possibility for them to refer their concerns to?
Well, they can certainly talk with their colleagues who might be represented on the committee. My immediate recommendation would be that they, they talk with the assistant principal, the principal at their school, and search out assistance with the challenge that they're seeing within their classroom.
Okay. And how do, you mentioned behavioral, behavior analysts and things like that, but how do we uncover and track persistent discipline issues in specific classrooms and schools?
So at the school level, the administrative team, they can run reports, discipline reports at the school level that will help them to identify when a teacher might have a challenging class. And then they would reach out to that teacher and work with them to determine what supports that they can provide that would help them out.
And tell me more about the behavior analyst. So that's something they can, you said they can request access to a behavioral analyst. How does that work?
Well, Ms. Hartman may be able to provide the specifics with that.
Good afternoon. So we have two board-certified behavior analysts, Dr. Patrick Gravlin and Ms. Amanda Tinknell. And schools pretty much email in to either one of them and request a consultation. And they will come out, they will observe the student, meet with the staff. Each case is different, so it's hard to say what they do in every circumstance. It might be that they, they will always offer recommendations. It might be a case of significant behavior where we will take one of our behavior specialist paraprofessionals and drop them in for a week or two to work with the student, to help get some supports in place, to help build the capacity of, of the program, of the staff that's working with them. It might just be that we offer some different Tier One suggestions. Again, it's so individualized, but they just email in a request, and we will come out and evaluate the situation. We have been, they have been asked to sit in on SST meetings. They frequently will come to IEP meetings. They will customize training. Right now, they are doing a customized training for Ruth Ann Monroe, where they're coming in early once a week. They did this last year, and it was very widely received, so they've been asked back. And they will tailor any kind of professional development specific to students. Mr. Jacoby talked about the, the general programs that we have, but sometimes a school will grapple with very young children like Ruth Ann Monroe. You know, they have, they have very young children, and the behavior may present differently. So they will tailor the training to meet their needs. We have been out to Western Heights. We've been out to Pangborn. Any place that we're asked to do the professional development, it's one of the, one of our favorite things to do, so we're out there providing that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hartman, when would we start with the two BCA, BCBA's?
Dr. Gravlin came aboard last November, and Ms. Tinknell came aboard this year. So prior to that, Dr. Gravlin was consulting with us on some of our more difficult, complex behavior presentation cases. And so that's how we started to, to do that. So it's a fairly new resource in talking about the 40-year history of, of kind of how we've come along. But as Dr. Michael reported, we have exponentially grown our therapeutic programs, our social work, clinical service staff. I remember when it was two, we're between gen ed and special ed. We're at 23 now. So we're really trying to meet those needs, and those needs just keep rising.
And the BCA, BAs are help, that too helps determine where the 22 people go and how they provide support and those types of things. Just want to be clear on what their role is. I've heard some criticism of the role, and it's, I think it's some confusion over what their role is as a BCBA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Jacoby, I have a question. You mentioned that our guidance counselors provide classroom lessons for students in classes K, or grades K through eight. And I'm familiar with those, having taught in an elementary school. And that those classes are social, emotional, geared towards those topics and issues such as bullying. And then you mentioned that in the secondary schools, in the high schools in particular, that those kinds of things are embedded in Naviance. Could you expound on what, what that is? What Naviance is and how those things are embedded? How, how does that benefit the student?
Helen's on her way.
It might be, because Ms. Hoffa is going to join us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
There's a scope and sequence for the high school counselors to follow within Naviance. And part of the scope and sequence is identifying the student's strengths. So there's a strengths finders program on there, as well as identifying goals, academic, career, personal, social goals for themselves. And also part of Naviance is identifying different types of career clusters that the children are, or the students are looking at. And that might meet their academic and social needs and their interests. And then, of course, all the academic components to it, too, applying for colleges and scholarships and those kinds of things. So the high school counselors go in and meet with, each grade level has designed curriculum through the Naviance program. And then the counselors also develop like PowerPoints to share out that information and how to use Naviance for the students' benefits.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I have a question about data. We are back in September as part of an update that we receive weekly from the superintendent. There was a chart that showed three years' worth of data by school, by level, grouped elementary, middle, and high, bullying reports. And in looking at this, it's, it's evident that there are double the number of bullying reports at the middle school level. And I'm curious to know what specialized training or what efforts? And are we looking at particular data with regard to those reports, incidents? Do we know if these are girl-on-girl bullying, boy-on-girl bullying? If there's any racial issues? Is there any data of that sort kept that would be helpful to us in knowing?
Right.
So that we could address those with PD or
Sure.
special training?
So the process with the bullying reports is, a copy of the report comes into the supervisor of school counseling. They maintain a copy of that. Helen does a great job with reviewing every report. And some of the, the numbers that you saw within that chart, for example, where you see 107 for this past school year at the middle school level, keep in mind that that's what was reported. Some, some of the reports that come in are, after the investigation, are substantiated. And some of the 107 reports were unsubstantiated, which means that it either, there was no evidence to prove that the bullying occurred or that it did not occur. So when you, when you look at the numbers, I think the one thing to kind of just be careful with is that's the number of reports that were made using the, the formal form. But within that number, there's a breakdown of substantiated versus unsubstantiated. But yes, as far as the processes are concerned, Ms. Hoffa reviews the forms. We use that information when we're looking at training each year. when we're looking at training each year. The schools use that information as well for their needs.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Stoughton?
I'm trying to learn about restorative approaches. So, Mr. Bickford and I get into a knock-down, drag-out fight in the hall, and we're taken to the office, and conflict resolution is going to be used and so forth. And we agree that reach a solution. What happens when that approach is used and three days later, you know, he assaults me because he's going to start it all the time? But we get into another fight. I mean, where does restorative approaches end? And there got to be consequences. I, I, I'm not against restorative approaches. I think everybody's probably at some point used that without knowing they were using it, having conferences with kids and so forth and talking to them about their behavior. I mean, I used to talk to a lot of kids about their behavior and so forth, but I didn't, wouldn't have said I'm using a restorative approach. It just seemed to me to be common sense to talk to them and so forth. So, where does this end? How does the sequence go? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. You know, if two students get into a light physical altercation or an argument, sometimes it makes sense at the school level to try, if both parties are willing to talk through that matter. Sometimes, the school and the counselor, the administrators, get the two students together and have them kind of talk through the issue. So, when possible, we try to allow the students to work out their, whatever was the source of the friction, with the hopes that it's not going to reignite later. I think it's, once the, once there becomes a pattern of disruptiveness or a pattern of assaults is where it's probably less likely that a restorative approach would occur at that point. So, once there's a pattern of behavior, you know, the third or the fourth fight, the student's probably going to be assigned to in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. But there would still, at that point, be an effort to get the students to come together if they're willing, to have a conversation, to bring some restoration back to the process.
Well, I keep hearing from some people that our discipline policies are not reflective of restorative approaches at all. I find that hard to believe. I mean...
I think, when I look at the restorative approaches document that you have, we've been doing, as a district, we've been doing the majority of these for many years. Our counselors have worked with students with conflict resolution and mediation and peer mediation. We've had those programs in place for years. I think the newer ones, the circle processes, that's a newer approach. And we have a few schools in the district that have started to use that approach. We're preparing to train more teachers on how to appropriately use circles within the classroom. The same with the restorative conference, which is on the back of that document. That's a very structured conference that needs to be led by a trained facilitator. And we're going to be providing our staff with that training this year as well. But I would say that, you know, some of these approaches that's on that document, we've been doing for many years. But there are certainly several that we've either not yet started or we're beginning to start.
Okay. Yes. I just want to speak about restorative practices and classroom meetings. When I worked at Salem, we did classroom meetings for a while. We found it very beneficial. I also took the training with Jeff Farr, and I've observed classroom meetings with some teachers. And I think it's a good practice. And I think if you start in the lower grades, start pre-K, kindergarten, I think, once they learn how to resolve those conflicts, I think they carry that with them. And I think we're going to see a big difference in our discipline problems if we use restorative practices. So, I'm a big fan.
And I think it goes back to developing that, that sense of ownership with having the students be part of the process with resolving the situation.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Okay, we'll move on to our second topic, career and technology education and enrichment, with Mr. Cody Pine, who's supervisor of career and technology education and enrichment, and Dr. Peggy Pugh, who is our associate superintendent for curriculum instruction. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Thank you. We're happy to have part two of your day to share some information about career and technology education. With me is Mr. Cody Pine. He is our supervisor of career and technology education. And he's prepared for you some information that can guide perhaps our discussion following.
So, I want to just start off and talk to you a little bit about what career technology education is. And I'm sure you've heard me say this before, but career technology education is far different from the vocational education that some of us may be used to, particularly for the traditional trades programs. Not saying that we don't have those trades programs anymore, but career technology education is changing. Today's CTE programs focus on all career cluster areas and provide opportunities in industry certification, dual-transcripted credits, articulated credits, some built-in soft skills, and the combination thereof. And we're pleased and proud to say that a few years back, we were tasked to bring value-added to our career technology education programs. And we're very proud to say that today, the students have the opportunity to gain that value-added once they complete a career technology education program. And that's every program that we offer within the county. So, we're, we work closely with our employers, and we're proud to say that we are developing a successful 21st century workforce. So, the state of Maryland has every occupation defined in what's called a career cluster, and there are 10. The Maryland State Department of Education then has worked within, inside those 10 clusters to align programs of study within the sub-bullets you'll see there. Those are our career program areas that are adopted in the state program of study. And I'm following these programs of study, makes our programs eligible then for the Perkins funding, which is a federal funding that we apply for and then report on. So, you can see some of the major career cluster areas here on the slides. There's arts, media, communication, business management, finance, construction, development. And those are, those are some that are, you'll see highlighted here in the programs that we have. This slide shows environmental, agricultural, natural resource, human resource clusters. But you can see some huge leaps, particularly in like the human resource services. Inside that cluster lives cosmetology, but also like a fire and rescue and EMS program. So, when we're doing a program advisory committee, or when we're doing a roundtable for the human resources cluster area, we need to have representatives from each of those sub-bullets present. Next, you'll see information technology cluster to the consumer services hospitality and tourism cluster. And I'll just share briefly a success story. Bowman opened a new hotel over downtown here, and we had our students there from the North Hagerstown High School Hospitality and Tourism Program. Mr. Bowman raved that they were the best accolade of the day for him to get to see our students and how well-prepared they are, the certifications that they have, the professionalism that they show, wants to hire all of our students immediately. So, that's a true success story on that. Another example would be the Cisco Networking Academy. Now, students have several pathways that they can take. Our programs prepare students to go transition directly to the workforce or to a post-secondary institution if they choose. And again, we're proud to say that a lot of our programs offer a variety of options. So, you'll get a certification, and then you'll get some, a transcripted credits, or you'll get articulated credits. So, the Cisco Networking Academy is an example that provides all. So, our students will have the option to go directly into the workforce with certifications, but they can also attend a post-secondary institution because we do have a dual-transcripted credit, which means that they're receiving college credit at a reduced rate inside our classroom. And they also have articulated credits, which we sign an articulation agreement with different post-secondary institutions that our students can attend then and get those credits. So, all CD program computer pathways offer authentic work-based experiences as well. And we're looking at expanding those opportunities as a capstone for our students, because we want our students to be able to transition seamlessly, whether that be into a post-secondary institution or a career. So, we are working hard to create those authentic work-based learning experiences. So, we take a look at how our CTE programs developed, so we need to take a look at how those CTE programs are embedded into the career clusters. And we examine the workforce needs. We work with the Department of Labor, we work with our local business communities, we work with our local roundtables, we work with our local post-secondary institution partners. And we examine all of these things because we want to, we want to have programs that provide students opportunities for careers that are going to exist, not just in five years, but in 10 years, in 15 years, in 20 years. And perhaps those careers in 20 years may not even exist yet. So, we're looking into the future to develop programs, and you'll see here in a few minutes, we've been tasked to develop some new high-end programs for students for careers that may or may not exist yet. And so, we're working that direction. We also rely heavily on our post-secondary partners for alignment and, but one really thing that we do need, we need to have that curriculum. And we backwards map that curriculum, which is in line with all of our curriculum needs for our division of curriculum. What's the end goal? The end goal is employability. And that, that end goal, you can achieve that many routes. Is that going to a post-secondary institution? Is that leading to, to, through our work-based learning program, our career technology education program that gives us that certification and that, you know, we have to look at the actual job, what the requirements are to fulfill that job. If it's going to be a physician, of course, there's going to need to be some post-secondary training beyond what we can offer. But if it's going to be an information technology specialist, likelihood is, once the student graduates our program, they are going to be ready and successful to work, or walk right into that workforce and be highly qualified, and be, have the skills necessary to be successful and to make a successful living wage. So, I want to just talk about, we did do some alignment with Hagerstown Community College here recently, where we have programs at Washington County Technical High School, whereas students, once they complete and graduate the, those programs at Washington County Technical High School, can transition to Hagerstown Community College, and within just a semester to receive their associate's degree. Because they're receiving articulated credits, because they are receiving AP-credited scores, and they're scoring those threes, fours, fives, the requirements theirs are needed, and they're leaving there with enough credits for just one semester to get their associate's course, I think is a huge, huge win for us. And those programs are network administration, cybersecurity, medical assisting, new launching of the program, applied manufacturing, engineering, so we're working with HCC now. They want to align with us and with our program because we are setting the bar. We are taking everything to the next level, which that's forcing all of our post-secondary partners to take their game to the next level. So, I'm very proud of that as well. So, programs are reviewed at minimum twice a year, but the majority of our programs meet monthly for a program advisory committee. Moving on to the programs that we have, and I know I'm going quickly, I was told I've had a limited amount of time, so if you have any questions, please write them down, I'll answer at the end. But at Washington County Technical High School, we have 17 specialized programs. And these programs are non-replicable, per se, in the comprehensive high school. And that's because of time issues, spacing requirements, and things like that. For our collision repair, we have a paint booth, we have a large indoor lab area, we have a paint mixing rooms, et cetera, and so forth like that. So, we have a lot of square footage for that one program, and it just wouldn't really be feasible to have that at a comprehensive high school. So, the majority of our programs at Washington County Technical High School are specialized. And we are really receiving accolades from the state for our programs at Washington County Technical High School. Not that our programs in the comprehensive high schools are by any means second, but it seems that Washington County Technical High School has caught the attention of the State Department. So, we've been asked to attend lots of presentations to tell the rest of the state how we're doing it correct, what's our future vision, what's our five-year plan, how are we developing new programs, how are we, how are we considering the relevance of the programs that we have in existence and things like that. So, again, I'm very proud of the work that's happening at Washington County Technical High School. So, I'm just going to go through briefly the comprehensive high school programs. And they differ from the programs at Washington County Technical High School because they are a four-credit class. Whereas at Washington County Technical High School, students are there junior year, senior year, every other day, so they get an eight-credit completer course. At the comprehensive high schools, students take a series of usually four classes, one credit each, to get a four-credit completer. Students still get the industry certification, still are eligible for, I should say, industry certification, still are eligible for those articulated credits, still are eligible for the dual-transcripted credit, it just is less credits than, and hours that would be at Washington County Technical High School. So, I won't read all these to you, but at Boons Bar High School, you can see we have a, a good selection of programs, again, at Clear Spring and Hancock. We examine those programs based on industry needs and based on student need. And we want to, at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're taking care of our students so that they can have a sustainable, meaningful career at the end of their educational pathway. Again, North Hagerstown High School, I talked a little bit about the success of their hospitality program, but also the interactive media production program. And again, that, that program is going to be, and I'm jumping ahead, it's going to be moving to, from Tech High to Barbara Ingram, and I'm very excited about that, but I'll talk about that in a minute. At Smithsburg High School, we have, and you can see computer science is here, and it's been offered at every high school. I was tasked to make sure that we are providing computational needs at every school through, with the computer science pathway. So, if you, if you look at the next slide, you'll see then, South Hagerstown High School, Williamsport High School, we have those computer science classways. So, I'm going to talk about computer science just briefly because I'm pretty proud of where we've come from. We have taken a look at the culminating experience at the end of the computer science pathway. There's an intro class, there's two AP classes in the middle, and then we are pulling those all together, and we're looking at shifting to a robotics class as the capstone for that pathway. So, again, we are being looked at by the Maryland State Department of Education to set the bar, lead the way. We've just recently received a professional development grant for our teachers through the Maryland Center for Computing Education. Our computer science teachers have a professional learning community, which has been greatly invigorated by the digital integration specialists in that area. And we're working through having those folks build curriculum, share curriculum, work with the Maryland State Department of Education to make sure that that curriculum is meeting the framework for computer science standards within the state. Once we have everything finalized, then they will adopt our program as the program of study for the state of Maryland. So, some CTE enrollment statistics. About 60% of students in grades nine through 12 in 2018, 2019 were enrolled in a career technology education class systemically. So, that's about 4,100 students, system-wide, took a career technology education class. About 98% of those students took the, either the third course in the pathway of progression or finished the course, which means that we have a pretty high completion rate for our programs, which is great and outstanding. 48 programs in all, 17 of them are, live at Washington County Technical High School, with 31 in the comprehensive schools. The preliminary data for the 1920 school year shows that our concentrator numbers have... The preliminary data for the 1920 school year shows that our concentrator numbers have increased pretty significantly. I don't want to share preliminary results just yet, but it looks like the students are taking more career technology education, education classes across the county. We're going to move on to the youth apprenticeship program. In the fall of 2016, Washington County Public Schools was chosen, and I'll use that word loosely, chosen to pilot the youth apprenticeship program. Since then, the program has grown substantially, but one really, it's a lot of work for this program, and it's a real value for employers and, and for students, and we just really had to work hard to get the right fit of student for the employer. But one fantastic result, unexpected result that came from this program is the relationships that we have built with our community businesses. We now have community businesses coming to us saying, can you get us students for this? Because ultimately, if you look at every career cluster area that we've looked at, we have an aging workforce. So all of our workforce needs, if we're looking at the next five, 10 years, are going to need to be replaced, and that's cyclical. So over time, we have to look at making sure that we are looking at labor market analysis to keep our programs rigorous and relevant. But the great thing about the apprenticeship program, we built strong relationships. We sit on the roundtables within the county. We, we participate in the roundtables within the county. Matter of fact, we have, we're hosting the construction roundtable at Washington County Technical High School next month. So we are a big part in driving the economic development in the county, which I'm very proud of that as well. And our students always represent and present themselves in a professional and organized and meaningful manner. So, so to give you a little bit of statistic on the apprenticeship program, after the third year, so we have 26% of the students still in the apprenticeship program, with another 26 hired on full-time. That's success. The businesses hired our student as a mentorship-based, work-based learning program. They said, they're so good, we want to keep you. Of those 26 still in the youth apprenticeship, we're, we're fully confident they're going to be hired as well. Another 30% of the, of the 23 went to college, and as to be expected, because the careers that they were looking at apprenticing in need further training beyond high school. They need some post-secondary training. 4% went to the military, and 14% said, hey, you know what, this just may not be for me. And that's okay, too. That's actually great, because we don't want a student to go into a job, into a career that they work in for 10 years, 15 years, and decide, this isn't for me. So we want to try to get them placed where they need to be in the beginning. Programs in development for this year, for 1920, we're looking at the apprenticeship program for every high school comprehensive included, including Barbara Ingram. We're looking at adding interactive media production to Boonsborough High School, with the potential of adding interactive media production to Williamsport High School here in the future, and we are transitioning the general ag mechanics program at Smithsburg High, High School into the curriculum for agri-science, education, agricultural engineering program, which means that they're still going to be doing career technology education-related projects, only it's going to be in an engineering design process fashion. So it's just a little change up from where we're at now. Further on, future programs in 2021, very excited about these. We're looking at, from, so the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, the, the UIP project will be completed at that time, and then the computer game design, animation, and the digital communication programs are going to move downtown. Huge. We already have our staff working with Barbara Ingram's staff, working on recruiting students. We're working on working with current students at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts with our two programs that are transitioning downtown. The staff at Barbara Ingram could not be more excited to receive these programs. Already heard of so many more ideas of what, what they want to come. It's a great opportunity. It's going to be great things happening for, and for Rob, and Rob and Rodney, Gaiman, the principal of, of Technical High School, and the principal of Barbara Ingram, have been working together to recruit students, retain students, moving the programs. So that's going to be a huge success. But the, the two new, very exciting programs that we're going to be launching is the cloud computing and artificial intelligence. So that, that's brand-new. In fact, we just met with some post-secondary partners yesterday at, at the Technical High School, and we, there's no other county in Maryland that has this program, so we are building it from scratch. But we're using our post-secondary partners. Again, we're taking that end goal. What's the end goal? And we talked to our business partners, our brisheer Azizis from OpsSmart, our, our GHC leaders, and we're saying, what do we need? I mean, what do you want a student to have to work on cloud-based solutions once they leave Washington County Technical High School? So we brainstormed that, that committee, and we found that we need some Cisco programming, some Cloud Plus certifications, we need some Microsoft certifications, some IBM certifications, and so we backwards mapped that, and we're building curriculum now. That doesn't exist anywhere in high school, so we're building that curriculum with our post-secondary partners. The second program that we're launching is the Applied Manufacturing Engineering Smart Automation Certification Alliance Program. That's a mouthful, but it's, it's, it's an applied manufacturing engineering program. Very excited about this program because it's what our business partners have been asking for. This isn't a traditional machine shop-type setting. This is more of an internet of things, controlling our devices remotely. This is a, this is using artificial intelligence and mechatronics. This is next-level manufacturing. It's not going to replace jobs, but you're going to need to have a high-skilled knowledge set and certification to be able to complete those tasks. So we've, again, been working with our business partners, our post-secondary partners, our community leaders. Dr. Michael, Dr. Pugh have been giving guidance on where they'd like to see this moving, and so exciting things about to roll out here in the future. Super excited to share more about, about that with you when, when they roll out. So last slide is, it's not complete, it's a work in progress, and a five-year plan. So what we've been thinking about for a five-year plan would be a blended trades program at Washington County Technical High School. And what's that mean? What's that look like? Well, that looks like a student will have the opportunity to get all the trades-based instruction in sort of one course, or one, one program. So they're going to get some HVAC, some plumbing, some electrical work. Not saying that we're going to take away from our in-depth trade programs, but this is a, this blended trade program will then allow a student to be able to experience the whole gamut of the trades, and then be able to maybe transition to, after, after Washington County Technical High School, transition to a bar academy to finish out that one year of apprenticeship-able instruction to specialize in that area that they, they find that they are strongest at. Another program that we've been talking about now is a sports medicine program, an athletic training program, something of that nature, and we would, that would be a logical fit at a comprehensive high school because it's going to require AP Biology. It's going to require AP Chemistry. It's going to require those courses that are traditionally taught at, at the comprehensive high school. So I know that was a lot and, and very quick. I, I hope you-
Two minutes for questions.
I, I'm very passionate about this. I'll talk to you about this anytime, anywhere. I'd love to have your questions. Dr. Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't offer you any time for comment. Any comments you want to-
Okay, you can, you can see Cody's passion for what the career technology education. I think a couple of things we really worked on is this concept of stackable credentials, so really having some type of credential when you leave high school. And in some cases, some students are going to leave with two and three different types of credentials, so that prepares them for the workforce, or prepares them for post-secondary training, which could be technical college, could be military, could be four-year college, could be community college. And the articulation agreements, we continue to expand, and again, we're trying to really create programs that, you're hearing more and more about people going directly into the workforce. Probably the biggest thing that hurts our children is they're 18-years-old instead of 21-years-old sometimes, or they lack experience, and that's where this apprenticeship program is really coming into play. And I think we're getting a very positive reinforcement out in the community with apprenticeship program. We want to continue to expand that. So we're probably going to look to invest some additional resources in that, try to really get a lot more of our children to have, students to have opportunities like the apprenticeship program. The governor's very big on this. I mean, other countries, Germany, those other places, really see this as a valuable work experience program, and we want to see that as well. So I hope a lot more to come in CTE, and a lot of, a lot of great things here for the future to come very soon. And I'm sure the team would be glad to take any questions you might have.
I have a question. If a student doesn't get into a technical, Technical High School, yet they still have an interest, because I've seen this, this happen a few times, they really wanted to get into photography or something, didn't, didn't make it into the school. How do we follow up with them to still give them those opportunities to study these kinds of things?
Well, there's a, there's a couple routes, a couple pathways that we can take. One would be that we will work with that student at a career technic, technology education program that they are, or do have access to at their home school. Another route is this new apprenticeship program. So for example, say you, you wanted to get into, and I'm just using this as an example, an auto, auto-tech program, and, and maybe that, maybe you, you know, just didn't make it for some reason. We will have apprenticeship-able programs that Brandon Younger over here, Younger Toyota, he's been asking us, send us, send us someone over, we want to, we want, we need technicians, we need technicians, we need technicians. So we will give that student-related instruction at the career technology education programs that they have in their comprehensive school, which will give them enough instruction to be able to transition to that apprenticeship-able program, which they will be mentored and given on-the-job training.
And then he's even willing to send them to further training. So I think that the relationship with each of those is unique, and we're able to get into smaller businesses. The same thing with photography. I mean, we have great relationships with our local photographers, if we could work with them, and then with the Potomac Edison Grant allowing us to provide sponsorships, that helps the smaller business owners be able to take on an apprenticeship at a lower cost, so.
And, and we're exploring apprenticeship programs. We, we have county government apprentices, we are going to have city government apprentices. We're, we're talking about apprenticeships here at Washington County Public Schools, so we have opportunities for students.
Do we have, because I know we've, you know, when I was in middle school, we had shop class and things like that, which I'm, I'm pretty certain most of those are gone now. But if a student already is showing an aptitude or an interest in that, similar to like the Barbara Ingram feeder program with Westernites, do we have opportunities at the middle school level?
And we do. And in fact, Dr. Pugh has tasked me to redesign technical, technology education six through eight, and we've already redesigned foundations of technology, given the framework from MSDE since it's a graduation requirement. We had to stay within those parameters, but we do do some career exploration. I know Helen talked about Naviance, and we're going to use Naviance as a tool to do some career interest surveys. You know, that will help us in our data collection to see where are student interests, and do our, the student interests match the programs that we have? Do we need to look at expanding? I mean, does that match the labor market analysis that the Department of Labor is giving us for five years, for 10 years, for 20 years? So we do have metrics in place to garnish and gather career interests through career interest surveys.
And as far as the redesign of the middle school technology education, some of the teachers are already working on that, and they have very skillfully blended in both the career standards, and then the engineering practices standards, computational thinking, along with financial literacy, which is the next piece that we want to make sure that when, when they're experiencing, all students have access to a good foundation in those, those areas.
And I think once those are built, it'll be powerful, and, and that's in, in the works now. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you both.
Sure. Thank you.
Colleagues, if you have no further questions or anything else to discuss, we'll adjourn our work session.